Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Meeting of October the 11th. Thank you for being in attendance. Adam Clark, would you be the roll call please?
Mr. Cantle.
Here.
Mr. Shyland.
President.
Ms. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Mr. Schiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Vaughn.
Here.
And Mr. West.
Here.
Eight council members present.
We're going to rise with me.
Praise the Lord. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the beauty of this late October season. The harvest is nearly complete, and you've provided for us a wonderful, wonderful planting year. I'm grateful to live in a farming community where so many have done well. That helps all of us as they feed the world. That being prayed, I want to remember tonight those that are struggling. The nation of Haiti, the southeast and the Gulf and the US, all the way up the New England seashore, the coast. I pray for those that have been and remain in harm's way from winds and from floodwaters. I pray for the tens of thousands in recovery, relief workers and volunteers that are working hard every day to help those folks the best they can. May we all be reminded of the need to support that work and pray for the many victims that will take months, if not years, to recover. I also want to be faithful to remember police officers that serve our communities and our nation. Last week in America, we lost four to violence. And Lord, I pray that you'll carefully protect our police officers and continue, Lord, to keep a shield around them as they work so hard to protect our communities, our families, our businesses, and the way of life that we cherish. Be with them and help them. As well, I pray for our firefighters and EMTs that will rush into any scene to help any of us anytime in any situation. I'm grateful, Lord, for those that serve this city faithfully. And even this night, I continue to pray for our mayor and council persons, administration and department heads, and all of those who keep this city progressing and moving forward. I'm deeply thanks to live in this community under these servants' guidance. I pray for the boots on the ground that we see every day, working to improve and to build upon the progress that we're making. Thank you, Lord, for all of our city employees. I want to pray for those that are part of the city family, those that perpetually need your care and your guardianship. That would include but not be limited to Gabriel Polston, Bill Laswell, Mrs. Bushjost, Mayor Benton, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mr. Shyland, Chief Myers, and all other folks attached to our city family. Bless them as every need would require. For this session tonight and those that are here to participate, I pray your blessings on the work that's done here, the discussions that are held, and any decisions that are made, that they be pleasing to you. We pray all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Today, this month, October, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and it's a fairly common fire service tradition for several years now to, as a fire department, to recognize that and do some fundraising for the American Cancer Society. This is Scott Peterson. He's one of our firefighters. He is representing the local. The local is handling the fundraising part of this, and I really do appreciate the support that each one of you have done wearing the shirt and helping us out.
Just want to thank everyone, as Chief Harley said, for participating and wearing the shirts and showing the support, you know, throughout the community. I think it stands well, you know, with the community seeing you guys supporting us as well. So just a token of our appreciation for all your support that you show us in the fire department and, you know, around the community. So, thank you.
Scott.
Thank you.
You need to watch Chief real close now, because I gave him a little money for donation or just make sure he...
He doesn't turn it over.
Okay. Do you guys still have shirts available for the public if they want to purchase those?
Yes. Yes, we do. Yep, they're $20, so...
And they can contact you?
They can contact me.
Okay.
Call the station, and one of the guys will get ahold of us, and I'll make sure...
If we want to make a donation to...
Yes, you can make a donation however you want.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
Again, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
May I apologize to the firefighters at the fire department? I didn't wear the shirt tonight. It wasn't on purpose. Well, it was on purpose, I guess, but it wasn't meant as a slight. I just... It's in the laundry室 where it's at.
We need three laps and 20 push-ups.
Three laps, yeah. You might not get those.
I like your pin, though.
Yeah.
No one's ever seen a pin.
I do have a pin.
Again, a traditional symbol that, you know, the fire service has kind of taken on as exactly that.
Exactly.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
At the beginning of each council meeting, set aside a type for anyone who's present who has a concern concerning the operations of the city that they'd like to share with the council. So at this time, I invite anyone who's present this evening to come forward at this time and just ask a few minutes of your comments for five minutes, which is your name and your address. Thank you. See, no one coming forward. I'll leave you on. I'd like to welcome Adam Brake with the full sun this evening with us. I believe this is your first time, and I know you've been in the community a good while since. Normally seem in a little more informal setting, and why, he looks quite a bit different when he's sat down today. But anyway, he's there really working out, and I'm there just exercising. But anyway, we'll move on from there, and again, good to have you sitting there. We move on to unfinished business of which we have none, so we'll just move along, keep doing new business. Just like the church and church, we're not going to have Apple Palooza. Do you have some information?
I do. Um, I'm... Yeah. So Maria and Harris, on behalf of the church, has submitted their request, and each of the department heads who had an aspect of this request have had it for a few days now to look over things. In the past, it has been called the Fall Festival, and this year they have changed the name to Apple Palooza. So it is the same festival year after year, just under a new name, same group and everything. Looks like she's requesting the closure of Seventh Street between Market and Court from 7:30 to 1:30 on Saturday, and then also the use of electricity on the pole behind the church parking lot, so...
Does she have talked to the appropriate people?
Any questions from council?
She has.
I move we accept her proposal.
I think you have a motion. I think it hurts second down this way tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that motion?
Thank you.
All the appropriate persons have been notified, and electrical and everything is good to go.
Thank you. We'll take care of that.
All right.
All those in favor of allowing closure of Seventh Street and supporting them with additional electric hook-up, please signify as saying yes.
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 All those opposed, no. Thank you. Clear that. Seventh Street?
Point of the verbal fraternities.
Looking for Halloween.
And it would appear that Renee is not here either. So my understanding of this event is it's going to be pretty similar to the trick-or-treating downtown. Again, every year they host this. They're wanting to close Court Street from 7th to 5th with the understanding that Red Cross Pharmacy drive-through will still be accessible. And I believe she's spoken to Chief Myers about the street closures as well and any of those concerns. They're looking at closing the street down at 1:30, possibly a little closer to 2:00. And again, usually how this works is the children are able to come and have a trick-or-treat by going into the downtown stores. So I believe that that street closure is just a safety precaution.
Motion to approve their request.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to approve the request of Brick District. Any further discussion?
Do we know the format this year, what the kids are going to be doing, lining up, going in a... Just a free-for-all or...
I do not know that, but I can definitely get that information.
In the past, it's just been they get... We'd get bags at the Chamber of Commerce when it was over here.
Yeah, you could start at one point, and everybody go through.
Go through the route.
And they change it up at these times.
Stop time.
Maybe Chief Myers knows.
I do not.
You know any further details, Chief? Had to get him up there somewhere.
It's my understanding they're going to do it like they have in the past, where they pick up the bags, and then they'll circle from 5th all the way up to 7th and then back down the other side. And it's important you just said they're going to leave the drive-through open for the pharmacy. And so it's a great event, I think. A lot of the parents bring their children, and then they don't take them out to the... in the dark and residential areas so much anymore like they used to, so...
Based on their request, it pretty much says we're supposed to tell them how to do it. So Steve will work with them and get the starting time and the route and all that worked out.
And they haven't, I don't think, set a... in stone a time yet, but it'll be around 2:00, 3:30 to 6:00 or...
I believe so.
Yeah.
You're going to set the time.
Yeah, I can set the time.
And that's what she answered.
And the newspaper will, I'm sure, let us know what's going on.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Eve.
Now, any other questions? We'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, thank you. It's awfully early for me to start thinking about Christmas already, but I'm glad somebody is.
Not really.
Fulton J.C.'s are with us this evening, and they have a request about the Christmas parade.
I'm just happy you're here.
Well... And a merry Christmas to you.
Yeah, early.
Hi, I'm Caitlin McGrath with Fulton J.C.'s, and we just want to ask permission if we can have our Christmas parade this year. It'll be the 68th year that we've had a Christmas parade. I think our theme is Candy Cane Christmas, and we've asked Carl Buckner today to be our grand marshal. He's super excited about it. And that's about it. We've talked to... We talked to Chief Meyer this morning, and we're going to try and do the same route that we had, because they're still doing the State Hospital construction, so we'll do it around MSD and, I don't know, State Street or something like that, I think, the usual parade route that we have.
I'd say since the chief's standing right there supporting, we need to pass this thing.
Yeah, I'd say so.
Was that a motion?
That was a motion.
Second.
There you go.
We're good. I have a motion in the second to approve the annual 68th Annual Christmas Parade on December the 3rd. Any further discussion or any questions?
Chief Meyer also mentioned we're having trunk-or-treat out at the fairgrounds for Shop With a Hero.
This is the first year the J.C.'s have hosted it.
Yeah.
Police Department, and we're excited about it.
Yeah.
October 22nd.
Yep.
The 22nd.
From 6 to 8.
From 6 to 8.
Businesses are welcome to come, set up a table, and hand out candy.
Play games.
Even play games. Even regular families can come out and set up a table, and I know a lot of them like to bring their kids to those events because it's safer.
Exactly.
So if they want to bring their family and go through it too, then they're more than welcome.
And then the dollar at the gate, all the proceeds go to Shop With a Hero.
Yeah.
What was it? What was it October?
You go to where? What was the dates, please?
22nd.
October 22nd, yeah.
22nd.
And the time?
6 to 8.
6 to 8.
PM?
Yeah.
Dollar at the gate.
Yeah, a dollar at the gate.
All goes to Shop With a Hero.
Yep.
And it goes to Shop With what?
The Hero.
The Hero. It's to the shop of the cops.
It's to the shop of the cops.
It's all one.
Yes, the one that usually...
Shop With the cops.
And since you mentioned that, when is that event going to be?
Oh, the Shop With a Hero, yeah.
I think it's the 2nd Saturday in December, right?
Yeah.
So it would be the 10th, then, a week after the parade?
It's the same thing we've always had, only we changed the name because we don't have enough cops for the kids, so we've included the fire department, which helps tremendously, EMS, and also National Guard and... That work is here.
I'd like to discuss that event with you sometime. I'll get with you. Chief?
What?
The Shop With a Hero, I'd like to discuss with you.
Very successful.
Got an organization that wants to...
We do about 50 kids a year.
Provide some.
That's about what we can get fallen kids to help with.
Yes. And that the 10th year on this? Sergeant Sherry, I'm handling all the...
Awesome.
And if we partnered with the J.C.'s this year to raise money.
Wonderful.
We try to give each kid a minimum of $100 apiece.
And we at the fairgrounds, which is a little bit safer environment than Walmart or Kmart.
Yes, I do sometimes.
We need to run a corral for the kids separately at the fairgrounds. Definitely, good point. Which we're hoping for a whole new year. And you're going to put this in the newspapers, so everybody that's not here will know. It has been. It's actually a couple times. They actually put it on their Facebook page today. All right, good.
So any organization or merchant can set up a table for a trick-or-treat?
For a charge.
And just pay your dollar at the gate, because it all goes to Shop With a Hero, so...
And then new businesses, organizations, private families, anyone's welcome to come. Great idea.
We're good. I have a motion on the floor to approve the annual 68th Annual Christmas Parade on December the 3rd. All those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no.
Thank you.
Looks like we're ready to go.
Thank you all.
Wonderful.
At this point on the agenda, we've set a time aside for council members to bring any matter to the council that may be not on the current agenda. And this evening, let's start down here with Mr. Schiverdecker.
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Moore?
I have nothing tonight for you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vaughn?
I don't... I don't have anything either.
Ms. Gray?
Once again, I want to brag on the Brick event that we just had. It was wonderful, and I didn't get there until 8:00, and it was still going and doing great, so they did a good job. And then I wanted to thank the fire department for my shirt. As a survivor, I like to advertise. Here a while back, Bluebird Compost asked for permission to whatever, and we approved it. And at that time, he said, "There is no smell if you know what to do." I go down HH every Sunday, and it does smell. So I don't know if we need to contact him, put some lie on that, or do something to so the odor isn't so strong. And then I had a call and a complaint from an individual that lives on Eric Street out at Tennyson, and she said behind her house, there's a grassy field that the city has always mowed, and they're not doing that anymore. She wants to know why, because she says there's a lot of rodents and things coming into her home, and she feels like if that property is mowed, that would cut down on that problem.
Okay. We'll check on it. Thank you. Anything else?
I'm done.
I saw J.C. writing, so I know he'll take care of Bluebird and the Tennyson property. We'll check it out, see what status is on that. Thank you. Yes, sir.
What I've seen of the overlay project looks really nice. Looks like the Christiansen did a fantastic job again for us, as far as I could see. Did that go smoothly? No issues or...
Grand Street's beautiful.
Yeah, and Vine Street, the bridge is nice and smooth now. Did everything go good, or... I haven't been out by the warehouse, so they got that...
Everything's going pretty good. What they've done, I think, is good. We're still waiting on Nice Street. They're looking at starting Nice Street on the 24th, which, you know, I mean, in a perfect world, they'd already be on it and be working on it, and it'd be torn up right now and beginning to get that street in order. They've also... The other road they have left is Log Cabin Road. They're going to grind that street up and turn it back to a gravel road, if you remember. So still working with them to finish that project.
And how about the Warehouse Road?
The Warehouse is finished.
It's done?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's done, so...
Very nice.
Great. Thank you.
I think our vehicles are enjoying it whatever it is. Very?
Basically, I have nothing. I just want to thank the fire department again for the shirt, having the council survivor. And nothing else. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mike?
I was going to bring up Log Cabin Road, so I brought... Thanks for bringing that up. The guy that talks to me about it all the time said that it's been... Where we did this spring worked out pretty well. It graded a few times, and I think it was working pretty well. But when do you think we're going to get to that? Log Cabin Road?
Log Cabin Road. When is Christiansen going to get to that?
Yeah.
I'm hoping any day now. I didn't get an update from Steve, who's in charge of that project for me today, so I'm not exactly sure what day Christiansen is looking for, but should be done...
Next couple of weeks.
In the next couple of weeks.
All right, that's cool. Thank you. And I had another one. Well, actually, Wayne does. I received a letter from a lady, lives on Wood Street, a few weeks ago, and I did talk to Chief Myers about it. He said he was going to step up patrol and start writing tickets, but I'll let you go from there.
I'll read the letter.
Okay.
This is my fourth letter to the City Council about the issues facing uncontrolled traffic and speeding on Wood Street. My husband and I have reached out to the mayor as well as to the police department. This issue is not... This issue is being avoided. There are two schools, as you know, on that street. The increase in truck traffic and the state hospital is a grave concern. Buses are unmonitored, speed and car traffic exceeds 60 miles per hour with some vehicle. I have written to Councilman West. I am wondering if there will be any hope of this project being taken care of, and if... I will not tell you who signed it, but it's concern citizen, and I'm sure, based on Chief Myers is going to take care of doing whatever it needs to do. I don't know if council needs to get directly involved in that or not. I know Councilman West would like to lower the speed limit to 25 through there permanently. That's something we ought to talk about.
Chief, do we still have our little sign that we put around town that shows... that flashes and says what your speed is?
No, it's been broke for years.
It's been broken for years? Because that seemed to... When we used to get it, I used to seem to remind people to slow down a little bit better, especially around the start of school.
I play golf along that edge of that street, and she's not far from wrong. I've seen some people really get on it coming down through there, like a drag racing or something, because it is a straight stretch, and I think she's got a valid point that she's touching. And what we can do about it, other than having Chief start writing more tickets on that road, or patrol on that road heavier, I don't know.
Well, I think what happens is, you know, we talked to Steve about it, and he has increased enforcement up there for a week or two weeks, and then it... People kind of slow down, and then he goes and focuses on other areas, but if he just...
You're exactly right. I mean, I have counted four, five, and six police cars running down there within minutes of each other, because they'll go down the one, they're in, and they turn around, or they'll park in the park. So I mean, I think the police department is doing a good job of trying to patrol. They can't be there 24/7.
I've seen them out there with a handheld, too.
Yeah.
A couple times. Got the order, Steve?
I mean, that's one of my... That's one of my favorite speed traps.
Will you try to go too fast as you work this thing?
Trying to hold it down.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will follow up on those and try to give you a report on that. At this time, we will consider resolutions. Resolution number 3263 is a resolution that has to do with sanitary sewer and stormwater project. It's a contract with Ken Kaufman &amp; Sons to accomplish some work along those lines. Councilman West, would you please present Resolution 3263?
Yes, sir. Resolution number 3263, a resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to execute a contract with Ken Kaufman &amp; Sons Escavating, LLC of Jefferson City, Missouri, for the 2016 sanitary sewer renewal and storm sewer project at an estimated value of $180,315, and to sign all necessary documents in relation to said contract. I move for adoption of Resolution number 3263 at tonight's council meeting.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. I have a motion in a second to approve 3263. Is any further discussion of motion or any question? Yes, sir.
I do have a question. Is this an unexpected project, or did we have planned on that?
It's a project we're doing in cooperation with the State Hospital improvements. It's going to leave stormwater... We've experienced stormwater issues on State and Oak coming off the State Hospital for a long time. By doing this project, the stormwater that has traditionally come off of the State Hospital will no longer go into the Oak and State Street basin. It will go all the way down to Oak, and it will go into a stormwater detention basin, and then it will go into this structure that will take it straight to the creek. So it's a cooperative effort between the City of Fulton and the State of Missouri.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, one.
And Kyle, your letter, you said the... You got 10 bids, and they ranged. Seems like quite a bit arranged. Was there, like...
Yeah.
One of them way out, or is this one pretty reasonable compared to the others?
Yeah, pretty huge range, honestly.
The one was $484,000. I mean, that's way over double.
Yeah. I like the lower ones, is all I can really tell you. I know I can't, you know, I mean, it's... When they were opening bids, the first one was over $300,000, and the next one was somewhere around that, and then we had one around 180, and I was like, "Thank you." Now we're back there. But we had one that was like 165, and one that was 180, and one that was 185, and then we had some that were way up there, so...
You think they can... Are you confident they can do it for this price? They won't be coming asking for additional funds or saying, "Are we... Change orders or anything?"
We got a lot of experience with this contractor. Done a good job for us on several years' worth of sanitary sewer improvements.
Okay, that's what I thought. We're familiar with that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor to approve thirty-two, resolution thirty-two sixty-three. Uh, call for a question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. We'll now move on to ordinances. Uh, we have a couple of first reading ordinances. Bill number fourteen sixty-one is an ordinance that, uh, provides for a show me green sales tax holiday, which will be, uh, looks like in April of next year. Uh, Councilman Sheverdecker, would you please, uh, present bill number fourteen sixty-one by Title Longley?
Yes, sir. Bill number fourteen sixty-one, ordinance allowing the show me green sales tax holiday to apply to the local sales taxes of the city of Fulton, Missouri between April nineteenth, two thousand seventeen and April twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. Make a motion, we advance this bill for a second reading at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second. Very good. Thank you. I have a motion in a second to advance, uh, bill number fourteen sixty-one. Is there any questions on this, uh, ordinance or comment?
I'm not sure I understand exactly what this is. Show me green sales tax holiday, what?
This means if you buy a energy saving appliance during this time period, you will not be charged sales tax. You, the state has waived their sales tax. And I'm going to, I was going to make the statement a little later, um, after we did the next one. But for the past few years, the, the city of Fulton has participated with, and we're doing it in October because for a couple of years, we just got behind the eight ball and got too late and didn't get it done. So, we moved it up to, to get it done very early. Um, so last year, that was the state of Missouri, the city of Fulton and the ambulance district all observed these holidays. What I, what I hope we can get done this year is that for the county to also observe the holiday too, so that, so that there are no sales taxes at all on any of the purchases of, of either the energy saving appliances or the back-to-school supplies.
Up to fifteen hundred dollars.
Up to fifteen hundred dollars.
And I'll tell you, Council Lady Gray, if Columbia doesn't participate in this one and, and Brick can tell you, you get a lot of people come to Callaway to shop for appliances.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just hopefully we can get the, by doing it early, maybe we can get the county to participate this year.
Sounds good to me.
Very good. Okay.
Shame them in the newspaper.
If there's not any other, uh, comments or questions, uh, we'll go ahead and consider a vote on fourteen sixty-one. All those in favor of the motion, uh, to advance bill fourteen sixty-one, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good. That bill will advance, we'll consider it next meeting for further consideration. Bill number fourteen sixty-two has to do with the back-to-school sales tax holiday. And, uh, we're really early with this one. That's going to happen in August.
Well, we were early enough this past year that when she checked with the state, the state hadn't even like set up the schedule of who's doing it and who wasn't.
They do really appreciate us being ahead of things though.
Sure.
So, I think that's a good thing.
So, good. Okay. So, uh, Councilwoman, would you please present fourteen sixty-one for first reading by Title Longley?
Yes.
Fourteen sixty-two, I'm sorry.
Sixty-two. Yes. Bill number fourteen sixty, sixty-two, an ordinance allowing the back-to-school sales tax holiday to apply, to apply to the local sales taxes of the city of Fulton, Missouri between August fourth, two thousand seventeen and August sixth, two thousand seventeen. I make a motion to place bill number fourteen sixty-two, uh, for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Exactly.
Very good. We have a motion in a second to advance fourteen sixty-two. Is there any questions or comments on this motion?
This will be the same as the other, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anything else? Hearing none, all those in favor of advancing fourteen sixty-two for consideration next council meeting, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good. Staff's helping me catch up on some appointments to various committees and which I definitely appreciate. And you can see we have a bunch of them here. I would like, if it's all right with everyone, I'd just, if you'll approve all in one motion and I'll run through here of who we're appointing to the various committees. And so if I have no objections, we'll, we'll do it that way. So, once I'm done, if we can have that motion, okay. Uh, I'd like to appoint Robert Cannell to the Board of Adjustment, that's a reappointment. Judy Shaneman is a reappointment to the Historic Preservation Committee. Tim Riley is a new appointment to the Historic Preservation Committee. And Jeff Stone will transfer from the Historic Preservation Commission to the Park Board.